Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council on Tuesday, June 25, 2024. Would the clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Shireland.
Here.
Mr. Coghill. Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Mosley.
Here.
Mrs. Kail Smith. Mrs. Strasburger.
Here.
Mrs. Warwick.
Here.
Mr. Wilson. Mr. Lavell President.
Here.
Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Seven members present.
Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Remain standing for a moment of silence.
Let's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our next order business is to amend the agenda. Is there a motion to amend?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We have, the agenda has been amended. Our next order business is proclamations. We have one to be presented by Councilwoman Smith and Councilman Coghill.
Yes. Councilwoman Smith asked me to read it if she's not here, so.
I believe it's in front of her.
Okay. Okay, great, great, great. Whereas, June 13th, Turecki's 36th year with Parks and Recreation. She began her career in 1986 when she was a part-time pool aide cashier in Brookline. After working hard practicing her swimming skills, she was hired as a lifeguard the following season. And Shelley began attending the University of Pittsburgh, but she enjoyed working in the parks so much she remained there ever since. After being promoted to headguard, she became a full-time foreman in pools. In 1992, she was promoted to a program coordinator in pools. And whereas in 1996, she became the aquatic supervisor where she was responsible for over 200 staff on a yearly basis. She trained new lifeguards, all with different levels of swimming skills. Before COVID, she was always able to hire and train enough staff to keep the city pools safe and open. Many of the same lifeguards returning year after year. And whereas the credits, she credits the aquatics team for their amazing work who manages to make this all possible year after year. The entire staff is dedicated to the residents of the city of Pittsburgh and making each swimming season a safe and pleasant experience for everyone. And whereas Shelley has been promoted to the manager of Aquatics Office where she oversees the operation of the 18 pools, the maintenance of the pools, and eight spray parks. And Shelley was born and raised in Brookline with her five siblings. She adores spending time with her nieces, nephews, and mother, her best friend. That's sweet. She enjoys reminiscing about the adventures they had growing up in recent beach vacations with her mom. Swimming was always her favorite outdoor activity. And now therefore be resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize Shelley Turecki for her years of service to the Parks and Recreation and leadership of our city pools. And be further resolved that the Council of City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Tuesday, June 25, 2024 to be Shelley Turecki Day in the city of Pittsburgh.
Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
I'll just say, you know, Shelley, I got to see firsthand with the Moore Park project how hard you work and how hard it is really to develop and train and certify the lifeguards. And I was actually up there yesterday. I stopped there yesterday and they were fabulous. Veronica, hi Veronica. She was there. So they're all working hard. Everything was running smoothly. I got to see firsthand. You may not know this, but I knew your father pretty well. He was a political, powerful political person in his day and I was sent to him. But I know the family and you're just a chip off the old block. All of your family. I played ball with your brothers and congratulations and couldn't be more deserving. So congratulations. So would you like to say a few words?
Sure.
Hi, everybody. My name's Zach Coleman. I'm the operations coordinator for the Aquatic Division. Shelley hired me 20 years ago as a regular lifeguard. I've come up since then. And if you think 20 years working here is a long time, these people in the red shirts hiding in the back, they've been here a lot longer than I have, believe it or not. So Shelley has a way of keeping people around that want to work for her. And I'm sure everybody knows that lifeguards are hard to come by. Certification is very tough. In particular, we had some issues, not issues, but like we had some struggles this year staffing. And a lot of people think it's just lifeguards, but we need older individuals with more experience that could actually run these pools. So don't you know that Shelley called up a lifeguard that she used to work with 30 years ago that has kids, grown up, she's a school teacher, and says, hey Katie, I need you to run Jack Stack Pool this year. And she did it. So I don't know anyone else that could do something like that. Another example is we have another guy that used to work for us a long time ago that lives in Florida. He's a school teacher and she said, you don't need to spend your, your summer on the beach. You can spend it with us working. So what the point I'm trying to make is over the last 30 years, Shelley has built an empire in the Aquatic Division. And it's going to be a sad day whenever she decides to leave because whoever, I feel bad for the person that has to take her place because it's going to be big shoes to fill for sure. So 30 years, congratulations.
Geez, I don't even want to follow that one. Thank you so much, Zach. That was as a testament of how great my staff is. And I really wouldn't be here today without them. And it really is an honor to receive this award and truly a privilege to be serving the city of Pittsburgh residents for these years, the administration council. It's, it's really truly been an honor. And I had no idea back in the day when I started off as a pool aide working for City Parks and was attending the University of Pittsburgh with a neuroscience major, that I would be spending my career here in pools. Thinking back at it, I probably would have changed my major to something a little bit easier had I known that. But it has been a great ride. I have so many people, you know, that to thank that have come before me, my supervisors, they were great role models. They really helped me build, filled out my team. But I especially want to thank Catherine Vargas and Luanne Haran, who are my managers and have been for quite a few years. They have, they were very instrumental in me being able to build my full-time staff, basically the ones that are in the blue shirts that are here with me year round, that are so incredibly dedicated to pools. They're like family to me. We are a great team together. And they truly, their heart and soul is here in aquatics. And they do this for the community, for the kids. It's a very rewarding job, teaching people how to swim, teaching lifeguards, just life skills and things that they will carry with them in their career moving forward. Lifeguarding is a very important and serious job, but can also be a very fun job. And honestly, I would not have the success if it wasn't for them and the other people standing here that have worked with me over the years and have stuck with aquatics. And I have a strong team to make it successful year after year. And I thank them for being there by my side and coming back year after year, even having full-time teaching jobs, going from one crazy job, busy year, to jumping right into giving up their summers for the city residents. Last but not least, I'd like to thank my father for being supportive and teaching me how to swim in our backyard pool when I was younger. If it wasn't for him, I wouldn't be here today. And for my mother, who is here by my side. She's always my rock, my moral compass. And she has been my biggest cheerleader. And I, you know, love her and I appreciate everything that she, she does for me. All of these people standing up here, I admire and love. And they are my family. And I'm looking forward to many more years with the city. So thank you very much. This is an honor to receive this.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much. Councilman Coghill, thank you for being here to help present this proclamation. And a thank you to Councilwoman Kail Smith, who has been honoring our team who have been here and working with the department for a very long time. So I'm sure you're, you're seeing that, that, you know, not only do we have a team that deeply cares about each other, but they have deep histories with each other. And it's because they've been able to, to work together and to bring their, you know, knowledge and skills from starting off as a pool cashier and now being here and managing our aquatics department. You know, it's the summertime, so Shelley and I get to talk a lot and we get to connect a lot. And what I do know about her is that she cares deeply about aquatics, about people being able to enjoy and learn to swim and be in the pools. And she cares a lot about her team. She is actually has generations of people, families who have worked for her, which is really, really fun, too. I think we actually had a parent come back this year who hasn't lifeguarded in a number of years, whose daughter was a lifeguard with us last year. So you see that, you know, there are, there's a dedication to the team that she's built here. And I think it speaks volumes that you have so many people here with you today to support you. And I've just, I've learned a lot from working with you. And I know it's, you know, it's an intense season and it's important work. It's complex, but you handle it in stride. And so we're very lucky to have you here in the city, helping to lead, you know, a safe swimming summer for our pools. So thank you, Shelley, for all the work that you do. And thank you to your team for being here to support you. Thanks, everyone.
Well, maybe I could ask the members to come up and get in the picture, please? Yeah.
Councilwoman Teresa Kail Smith presents. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize Darren McMillan and congratulate him for being named Neighbor of the Year. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Wednesday, June 26, 2024 to be Darren McMillan Day in the city of Pittsburgh.
Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Proclamation has been approved. We also have two will of councils. We'll begin with Councilwoman Smith's. And you could probably just read the last clause.
Councilwoman Teresa Kail Smith presents. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh makes known its support for the Pennsylvania House Bill Number 2199 and Senate Bill 1233. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh encourages the passing of Alicia's Law. And Councilwoman Erica Strasburger presents. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh condemns the use of school voucher programming as harmful to the Pittsburgh public school system. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh calls upon the Pennsylvania Legislature to reject proposals adding school voucher funding to the Commonwealth's 2025 budget.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? If not, we may be a motion to approve both will of councils?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Both will of councils have been approved. That takes us to public comment. I would like to remind everyone that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, deliberation, which may be forced by the council, and profanity is not permitted. Our first registered speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller. Please restate your name and provide.
Tokyo Ciudad de Mexico, voted by voter verification for whom worldwide Global Intelligence Society candidates for President 2024, globalintelligencessociety.org. I was very pleased to see my daughter Veronica Miller here. It was Turecki's Day, Shelley Turecki's Day, but she, my daughter works for her and appreciates what she does. A concern of council is international society, culture sharing and activities, including film, between Pittsburgh City and the cities of other nations. Any of you counselors been to Abuja or Tokyo or Ciudad de Mexico? Mr. Gaining? TAE, Pixie, WTAE, WPXI? Anybody from there in those three cities? They're important. I and the GIS do not seek formal legal alliances linking Pittsburgh City and other nations' cities because the U.S. Constitution, Article 2, Section 2, assigns that authority to the President of the United States. But USC Amendment 10 allows cities to make allies of non-U.S.A. cities. In my 2024 PCs for June NEJ, 11 June NAGE, 18 June MEXI, I said that we should form USA alliances with NHAN, Nigeria, Mexico. In this PC, 25 June 2024, I say that in particular, we seek to ally Pittsburgh with Abuja, Tokyo, Ciudad de Mexico, and that more particularly, we seek alignments of the peoples, not the governments of Abuja, Tokyo, Ciudad de Mexico, and Pittsburgh. Within, so within the unrealized ideal of USA NAGE, USA NAI, USA MEXI alliances, I and the GIS seek to realize kafkache, alignment of the people of Abuja NE, Nigeria, and the people of Pittsburgh on film, society, and culture. The first Nigeria film is 1926, Palaver. If Nollywood is the center, that center is Kahului. Then the Abuja film community is a mini Nollywood. So if Hollywood's center is California, USA, then the Pittsburgh film community is a mini Hollywood. Pitt-Sinewood. We have the Pittsburgh filmmakers and the Pittsburgh Film Office.
Coast and Realty Avenue. I think I finally made a former, formal complaint. Sidewalk accessibility, unimpeded access to sidewalks is essential for people with mobility impairments to go to work, access government buildings, shop, and generally to travel freely through their communities. Changes were made, apparently according to the Department of Justice and the PennDOT. Anytime you make a change, there's some rules you have to follow. Changes were made, lots of hard work and beach view, but they forgot to finish Coast and Realty. A new existing crosswalk with updated curb cuts were altered. You can Google it. It was a ADA crosswalk. They took it out. All you have are stripes that falls over, and I've brought this up before. Now I have to cross to the other side of Realty, come out, make a wide swing on Broadway. They just need to put the curb cut back on that side of Realty and Coast where it was. I'll show you if you need to see this. Apparently, according to the state, you cannot remove a curb cut and not put it back in. I don't know how they're going to fix this, just because they say, oh, well, you can go out here and swing around there and do this and jump over the other one. No. The ones that you took out, that are Googleable on Google Map, that the utility companies had put in, have to be replaced. You cannot just make nice new curbs to fall off of. Thank you, and yay, more pool.
Good morning, Mr. President.
Morning.
Councilperson Charlin presents Bill 622, Ordinance Supplementing the Pittsburgh Code, Title VI, Conduct, Article I, Regulated Rights and Actions by Adding Chapter 619A, Entitled Quality of Life Violations.
Thank you. Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Safety and Wellness.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Innovation, Performance, Asset Management and Technology.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilman Mosley, Chair of Intergovernmental Educational Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilman Mosley presents Bill 614, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for 430 West General Robinson Street at No Cost to the City.
Thank you, woman. Thank you. Councilwoman Kail Smith, Chair of Recreation, Youth and Senior Services. Councilwoman Strasburger. Councilwoman Smith.
Councilwoman Teresa Kail Smith presents Bill 615, Resolution Amending Resolution 335 of 2021, Authorizing the Department of Parks and Recreation Office of Special Events to Enter Into an Agreement with Swank Motion Pictures, Inc., as a Sole Source for Rental and Display Rights of Certain Movie Entertainment for Events to Be Held by the Office of Special Events in Order to Authorize the Use of Funds from the Parks and Recreation Regional Asset District Trust Fund at No Additional Cost to the City.
Thank you. Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Finance and Law.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilperson Strasburger presents Bill 616, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Comer Miller LLC for Legal Services in Connection with a Police Litigation Matter for an Amount Not to Exceed $6,554 over one year. And Bill 617, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of the Gateway Engineers, Inc., for Expert Witness Services in Connection with Two Matters Filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas for an Amount Not to Exceed $50,000 over one year.
Thank you. Councilman Warwick, Chair of Public Works and Infrastructure.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Barbara Warwick presents Bill 618, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Works to Enter Into an Agreement, Agreements and/or Amendments with the Pennsylvania Department of Aging for the Purpose of Receiving and Spending Grant Funds in the Amount of $30,000 to Support Replacing Exterior Doors, Frames, and Hardware for Twenty Door Openings at the South Side Market House Healthy Active Living Center.
Thank you. And Councilman Wilson has no new papers, so on behalf of myself.
Councilman Daniel Lavelle presents Bill 619, Communication from Councilman Bobby Wilson, Chair of the Pittsburgh Land Bank, Submitting Their Annual Activity Report, An Annual Audit for the Year Ended December 31, 2023. Bill 620, Communication from Jake Pollock, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, Submitting Acting Pay Requests on Behalf of the Department of Public Works for Robert Sap, Per the Acting Pay Policy Revised in June 2018. And Bill 621, Communication from Jake Pollock, Director of Office of Management and Budget, Submitting to City Council the Attached Status Update from the Grants Office for the Week Ended June 21, 2024.
Thank you. We need a motion to read, receive, and file all three bills.
Don't move.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All bills have been read, received, and filed. The next order of business is reports on committee for final action, beginning with Councilwoman Erica Strasburger presenting on the Committee of Finance and Law.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilperson Erica Strasburger presents Bill 610, Report of the Committee on Finance and Law for June 18, 2021, with an Affirmative Recommendation, Bill 576, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Christopher E. Miles for Arbitration Services for an Amount Not to Exceed $6,034.88 over one year. Bill 577, Resolution Authorizing the Execution of Quit-Claim Deeds conveying all of the city's right, title, and interest in and to the city-owned property located in the 12th Ward of the city and designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County as Block and Lot 83S 301, 124N 368, 2029, 32, 42, 45, 76, 77, 85, 97, 99, 106, and 125A 371, to East Liberty Development, Inc., for Consideration Set forth herein relating to the full and final settlement of cases filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas at no cost to the city. Bill 578, Resolution Authorizing the Execution of Quit-Claim Deeds conveying all of the city's right, title, and interest in and to the city-owned property located at 1039 Salter Way in the 23rd Ward of the city and designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County as Block and Lot 24F 68, to Wang Mao for $7,500 relating to the full and final settlement of a case filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas over one year. And Bill 579, Resolution Authorizing the Execution of Quit-Claim Deeds conveying all of the city's right, title, and interest in and to the city-owned property located at 425 Michigan Avenue in the 18th Ward of the city of Pittsburgh and designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County as Block and Lot 14N 99, to Johnny Juanita Mohammed for $7,500 relating to the full and final settlement of a case filed in Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas over one year.
You have heard the reading and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion? If none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor to pass the bills, vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed, vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Charlin?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Mosley?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Thank you. The bills have received the legally required numbers of votes. It is passed finally. That takes us to Councilwoman Barbara Warwick presenting on the Committee of Public Works and Infrastructure.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Barbara Warwick presents Bill 611, Report of the Committee on Public Works and Infrastructure for June 18, 2024, with an Affirmative Recommendation, Bill 580, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Works and/or the Director of the Department of Finance to Enter into Leases, Subleases, and/or Amendments for Approximately 8,000 Square Feet at 294 Semple Street, Pittsburgh 15213, with Lessies, the Oakland Planning and Development Corporation, for the Purpose of Providing Space to OPDC to Provide Various Readiness and Training Programs for Young People and Adults in Public Community Meetings and Events for a Five-Year Period at No Cost to the City. And Bill 589, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to Enter Into an Agreement or Agreements with the Federal Highway Administration for the Purpose of Receiving and Spending Reconnecting Community Pilot Program Grant Funds in the Amount of $1,432,000 to Supporting Planning and Engagement in the Manchester Neighborhood.
You have heard the reading and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor to pass the bills, vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed, vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Charlin?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill? Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Mosley?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
The bills have received the legally required numbers of votes. It is passed finally. That takes us to Councilperson Robert Charlin presenting on the Committee on Human Resources.
Thank you.
Councilperson Robert Charlin presents Bill 612, Report of the Committee on Human Resources for June 18, 2024, with an Affirmative Recommendation, Bill 574, Resolution Providing for the Filing of Applications by the Commonwealth of PA Department of Human Services for Grants in Connection with the Joint Jobs Initiative Program Employment Advancement and Retention Network, and Providing for the Authorization to Enter Into Agreements with various agencies and to Pay for Expenditures for Costs to Support, Implement, and Administer the Program, Costs Not to Exceed $3,828,594.
You have heard the reading and the title of the bill. Is there any discussion? If none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor to pass the bill, vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed, will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Charlin?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Mosley?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Or, Mr. Was not here. Uh, Mr. Lavelle, President?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
The bills have received the legally required numbers of votes. It is passed finally, and that takes us to Councilman Inkohari Mosley presenting on the Committee of Intergovernmental Educational Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Inkohari Mosley presents Bill 613, Report of the Committee on Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs for June 18, 2024, with an Affirmative Recommendation, Bill 581, Resolution Amending Resolution 507 of 2021, which authorized the City of Pittsburgh to Enter Into an Agreement with the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority for Work in Connection with the Flurry Way Project. The city will participate in the project and providing for the payment of the cost thereof not to exceed $859,137.09, an increase of $294,428.08 from the previously authorized amount.
You have heard the reading and the title of the bill. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor to pass the bill, vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed, vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Charlin?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Mosley?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
The bills have received the legally required numbers of votes. It is passed finally. That takes us to motions and resolutions. Is there anything for members? If not, we do have meeting announcements. This afternoon at 1:00 PM, council will hold an executive session on Bill 600, 616, and 617 as it relates to litigation matters. Tomorrow, Wednesday, June 26, at 10:00 AM, council will hold our standing committee meeting at 10:00 AM. Speaker registration will close tomorrow at 9:00 AM. To register to speak at this meeting, please fill out the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage, and we also call the clerk's office at 412-255-2138. And lastly, also, as an early announcement for next week's meeting schedule, due to the Independence Holiday, council will hold both our regular and standing committee meetings on Tuesday, July 2, at 10:00 AM and 1:30 respectively. May we have a motion to excuse the absent members, approve the minutes, and adjourn the meeting?
Don't move.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.